Ya at eh shik e doh shed ne'eh. K'achha na'ta'siyoh kezi doh. Di oh asih doh eh ani biye jeh'akoh. K'do eh ya ha na sihtin t'ahahot zando. Ah shei adi ho'wado'oh sh't, ho'wado'oh de'shne. Aro sh'tchin doh, sh'ze'e doh. Da de's ba'ahlah eh asaha eh ha ne'eh seda. Aro ihyehe' na'anih de'shni doh leh shik e doh shed ne'eh. Shei di ma'i de'shki'shni, nishla'ontohre'chin ni'ma'ash'shin. Aro t'ahbahat da'sh'schei doh, t'ashche'edash'na leh. T'chodis ahol ye'ere' ar eh yasunasha. K'do eh t'orizinlini be'a'ani'el eh ko'ahlah at ah eh nihie'otla'na'azla. Aro'n hin'ant'chen'azla ak'oshim. K'do t'orizinlini be'a'ashleht oleh. K'do ha'jon'oleh nahah san ch'ema'ya de'lchil. Zehli san, t'hu'is san, cha'alchil, cha'alch'ech'chil, cha'alch'ewan. Aro t'chadidin'lt ani. Ni'ajun'eh'ewet ni'tla'ont'andhi ni'di eh ani biye. Ah kuijeh'eh k'do hon t'orizinlini hon hich'edil seda. Aro di y'den'eh dan'ahlini dan'saneh hon hik'esedoh i'in hik'et'ahlah don'leh nihit'sit'ajeh. Ben'ach'a'ach'ol'yani eh ihyehe'eh. Aro cha'shine'el la'on'k'on ch'ill. Nihilln tahuilneh kon de'di rukosin'sanas eh it's'adahna'ahlnehi. Ban tahuilneh. Aro ah kuijeh'no adi t'lebi'eh eh kon hik'et'olda. Don zaon dahslin'oleh. Aro do'pana hon ne'eh'da'oleh hon t'ah eh ya kon. Bi'gha'ot'ah hon bi', bi'tcha'di ch'edoh, bi'tcha'di da'doh, bi'nsit'z'adoh nas'kon ne'nejeh. Ne'nejeh hon cha'ani'ilno' na'anihin'sen'oleh. Da'ans'ah'go hon nihin'ana'anishtahol'ono doh. Cha'shinhlo' kon nihie'ot'cha'tan'da'st'i. Ya at eh'ho' na'an, na'anehin'tlado. Ya at eh'ho'n hich'na'hot'at'oleh. Ha'jon'go hon ya at eh'ho' al'hyena'ta'ilthi'eh'oleh hon. Aro da'nihir'gan'go hon. Nih'kon, da'elch'eh'ni hune'eshk'esh'na'st'chan'go. Aro hon hitt'ch'ona'sk'an, hits'as'ke'eh'na'slagoh. Nih'ike'yah'ta hon'ah go' aro kon hin'alt'lo'shi. Da'hol'ongo ya at eh'kon ch'ill'na'hot'at'oleh. Sh'omanahah san ya de'lchil de'nih y'den'eh dan'ahlini. Ah'alt'skon, ah'sa'an sit'sen'okon y'den'abel'cha'hotzob'ekha'arab'lah hon. Bit'sin'shtl'ijid'an'lini aro kon. Ah anit'akon bel'ash'tla'ibeh dan'hit'odjin'i. Ya at eh'kon ch'ill'na'hot'at. Ya at eh'ho'n ch'ill'na'has't'at'oleh nas'kon ne'nejeh. Aro cha'shine'el la'hot'di y'den'eh dan'lini kon aro hon. Nihie'eh masanen hich'chey, nihie'eman hich'chey. Ya at eh'ho hon ben'cek'eh. Cha'shine'el la'ho' ah anin hin'eh'dastet. Nih'yd'den'eh dan'lini bel'ash'tla'idan'lini. Cha'shine'el la'ho'n hitz'ah'ike'eh dahst'i. Eh ja'shii'eh'ot'eh'end'la'kon. Ya at eh'kon ch'ill'na'hot'at'oleh hon bit'eh'ah'alt'ch'one'ev'achha'na'ini'ilni'ro'leh. Nah'ach'chnen nih'iyajun nih'eh'ewet dan'lini ah'do'y chi hin'lini hon. Ba'it'ino ban'ahui't'alt'oleh. N'juno hon ba'ts'nan, ban'ts'naneh kes'oleh. Aro ji'd'at'oi'sk'han'oh eh ya hon. Nih'innah't'a'n'lini kon n'juno nadit'at'oleh. Kon t'ch'ahn'aznel dan'lini hon ji'd'abel'el'hasit'li. N'juno nih'ik'it'it'chan'oleh. Aro hon hie'be'sh bahasa ani dan'lini n'deh'ho. Ir'lahm'dat'leh hon. N'juno el'ik'it'it'hit'oh nas'kon ne'nejeh. N'juno hon ich'ill'na'de'ilnish'toleh. Ich'ill'na'dahui't'aro'leh hon nih'yd'ne'eh ba'. Aro kon ze'ell'inni dan'lini. Al'a'lan'je'de'ilnishi. Ihyehe'eh bedi'ni'ro'leh cha'shine'el la'at'ahs'sl'deh. Bit'cha'iyad'ahhot'eh'do'leh. Bit'ket'ahlah don'leh bit'sit'ajeh. Ban'ahol'iyad'oleh eh shi'n k'achha'na'han'zinih hon bel'ek'ein'la'do'leh. Bit'oh cha'shine't'egoh hon ba'ma'be'ye'eh'yl'ch'odaj'je'edah'hol'oh. Bit'so'ke'eh ben'ahl'ek'eh ba'ach'chnen ah'alt'sh'oh ya at eh'ho. Nih'ich'na'hot'at'oleh. Adi'je'eh adi't'lehi hon. N'juno hon ha'na'ta'de'il'je'eh'no n'juno kon na'de'ilnish'toleh. Eh shi'nanish'kon. Bit'seli nih'el'ek'e'na'sla ni'ma'ach'ol'iyad'oleh. Aro'n ch'yd'ne'eh cha'shine'el la'ezel'i den'azda. Bit'ch'ant'a hon k'az'oleh. N'juno hon bit'cha'iyad'ahhot'eh'oh t'ch'eh'dah'has'ched'oleh. Aro hon awali'eh'ta't kon t'la'aden'dah'has'han sh'ot'an'izi'oh. N'juno hon nih'ch'eh, nih'ch'ch'eh'dah'has'ched'oleh. Aro oh yuh hon ach'ach'chnen liniko. N'da'il't'cha'je'eh'na'dahui'shish. N'juno n'da'il't'cha'eh'leht'oh. Nah'ach'el'ch'ond'lo' bit'ket'ahlah don'leh bit'sit'ajeh. Ben'cek'eh'se'solo' na'anehin'tlado'leh kon min'as san lin'i. Kon t'orizinlini be'a'hananasi'oleh. Bel'ah ish'lay, bel'oh ish'lay. Ben'innahol'ni'ro'leh hon di y'den'eh dan'ahlini. Adi de'eh ben'ch'eh'ho ha'jon'as'lini, 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 ha'jon'as'lini. Ach'ei'yah nih'innat'ani lin'i sh'n'ah. Mr. President, President Jonathan Nez. Thank you.
Uh, here, uh, Sister Dr. Fowler. Uh, k'do t'orizin beh'in si' nach't'nan'it'lini doh. Ah'alt'sh'oshim kon. Yik'e'ni y'den'eh. La'bit'ji'da'st'ilt'oh, la'binit'da'st'ilt'oh. La'ach'eh eh ya. Uh, ah kon. Uh, di'dukosin'skagi bit'at'ol'na'i handi. Bit'sis'ev'ach'eh'indahst'i. Eh eh shi'n dopat'sudil'sen shik e doh sh'una. Aro Lisa le'ich'innlineh e doh. Ya't eh'nal'ligi doh ninsin'ltsagi. Aro'n le'hos'do'neh Mesa neh mas'ak'idi'kat'w'ye'eh'oh eh shi'n. Ah deh ben'ahl'oh'ist'sn'ala. Aro Lonny Alamo deh. Uh, Larry Rocky Ridge deh doh. Marvel doh Kin'lan deh doh. Da'areh dan'ihin'ahl'igiat'eh dan'ihidi'ni'ro'deh. Ch'edi na'ki'jin da'neshun'eh doh di'jin da'neshun'eh. K'do haneh nih'ich'ek'ond'eh'li. Uh, aro eh ya di'dukosin'skagi nahas'eh it's'adah. Uh, nal'chnihigi jo'kon. Uh, nih'ike'ni nih'yn'eh'zel'inni dan'lini'idoh. N'da'il't'cha'agijo. Uh, ik'jin da'ba'ya'akuijeh'tnach'ah. Eh k'do haneh nih'ich'ek'ond'eh'li. Ya ben'ahl'aneshude'il'inni'idoh ah'ni'ilt'skon hin'ahl'aneshude'il'inni'idoh. Nah'ach'ni shik'e'inh'ahl'lini. Ah deh da'isun'oltz'agi. Nihie da'isun'oltz'ah'go ben'ach'eh'ei. Ya desk'idi nal'chnigi y'den'ebi'ke'yah'p'ka'oh. Ak'ron'eh le' bi'indal'kirigi ya'nu'uz biye. La'ail'le't'kon nand. Uh, indi'eh hol'ye'd. Ah'do ye'egot'et'esk'it. Uh, nal'chnigi dat'ihlu'eh da'no'va'da haneh. Aro kon ash'kladin ha'hotz'ogoh. United States biye'eh handi d'endel'ke. Ak'ron nihie'eh'ash'oh. Kon t'orizinbeh'eh. Uh, di'nshi. Nah'aa'ila'an sobansas kes'ke'inh'ahl'lini. Oh, he'ed'oleh. Yah'ill'ni'eh da'ya. Ah'sa'an'ach'eh. Aro di'jin'je'eh t'chadidin'damil'iyajun. Do'ob'ah di'n nez'na'din. S'ost'se'din. En'el't'oh eh kon nih'ike'ni nih'yn'eh. Uh, di'dukosin'skagi bit'at'ol'na. La'la'eh ya'ich'edask'ch'ey. Ya't eh'andahslin. Eh kon bat'su't'at'oltz'ngi ihyehe'eh. Ah'do kon roh nih'ike'ni nih'yn'eh la. Nih'itz'ah da'ch'et'eh. Eh doh ke'edan'lini'idoh, bit'kes'tan'lini'idoh. Il'ch'eh'dah'at'inni'igi jo'eh bat'sudil'sen. Ah'sa'damil'iyaj'eh doh vahan'a'ki'nez'na'din. S'ost'se'din doh vahan'tcha. En'el't'la'eh kon nih'ike'ni y'den'eh. Uh, di'dukosin'skagi nal'chni'its'na'lo da'ch'et'eh. So eh ke'edan'lini'idoh. Uh, aj'eh il'ch'eh'dah'at'inni'igi eh. Uh, ji'da'st'ilt'oh binit'da'st'ilt'ben'ach'eh'kon. Bat'sudil'sen shik'e'inh'ahl'lini. Di'je'eh'ni'ri'ech' nih'ich'hol'neh. Nah'din di'hl'ye'l'kit'ya. Ah'sa'je'eh. Di'je'eh eh ya'aro'la nih'itz'ah'ch'et'eh'ndan y'den'eh. Aro'aro'la. Uh, bit'ol'na'ta. Nazpas'ahlah. Nazpas'eh'elah'aro bit'ol'na'ta. Aro nazpas'eh'aro'la ch'et'eh'ndan. Di nah'din di'hl'ye'l'kit'ah'sa'je'eh. So di'n eh'ya' nach'a'ila'lo va'ach'eh'ets'na. Kon da'handi nar, nal'chni'oh'deh kon y'den'ebi'ke'yah'p'ka'oh. N'dashni. Ah'da'din ne'ah'ni'ilt'skon at'ah'ni'igi. Lin'igi'zel'inni dan'lin'igi. Had'ain'ol'neh. Di nih'ich'eh'no ni'ze'ev'kit'da'st'i'oh kon ah'tcha'da'do'ka'ah. Le'Washington doh haneh nih'ich'ek'onda'li. En'da'di'je'eh'ani. Nih'ich'hol'neh. Bi'kl'od' n'j'ag'wo eh di nih'ich'eh'no ni'ze'ev'wa'da'st'se'go eh'ro kon. Do'eh ya'ch'oj'oj'ih'inda'do'leh. Nih'innach'ans'landa nih'idoh ni'ih'eh'ro'ta. N'sobans'us kes'. Ah nih'ich'eh'no ni'ze'ev'kit'da'st'i'oh kon t'chada'do'ka'ahl'od'inde'ah'ho'da. Ch'epen'in'agi eh'ye'eh'oh. Hon nal'chnigi. Yah'ill'ni'oh'da. So eh bin'in'na'ba'sit'hi. Do'ashin zh'oh'ko. Di nih'ike'yah'to' kon. Uh, nih'innaneshude'il'inni'idoh. Uh, ah nih'yd'an'ith'sen'oh. Ah zh'oh'shi eshte'ah'nd'at'ol'ni'lot'eh shik e doh sh'una. So eh bin'in'na'eh'ya had'ain'ol'ni'idoh. Di'ze'eh. Kon nih'ich'ek'oli'ah'gi Washington deh'ya. Nah'ad'azt'se'egi wa'aze'egi'eh. Azee'egi nih'ich'ek'oli'ah'gi eh. Na'ki'nez'na'din doh vahan'tis'din doh vahan. S'se'se'tamil'iyaj'eh doh vahan'ahlah'nez'na'din doh vahan's'tcha'din doh vahan's'tla. En'el't'oh eh kon azee'nik'ich'ek'oli'ah. Aro azee'nik'ich'ek'oda'ali'ah'gi. Kon nah'ad'azt'se'egi'ya. Na'ki'nez'na'din doh vahan's'tcha'din damil'iyaj'eh. Do'vahan'na'ki'nez'na'din. Do'vahan'na'din t'chan'el't'oh eh kon azee'egi'eh'ya. Uh, kon nah'ad'azt'se y'den'ebi'ke'yah'p'ka'oh. Ak'oh la'eh na'ki'de'ah'da'st'se'ya. Eh na'ki'ba'da'st'seni, be'a'ba'da'st'se'egi'eh. Uh, na'din. Na'as'te'din. Djin damil'iyaj'eh. Do'vahan s'ep'edin, do'vahan'tcha'din, do'vahan'tcha'en'el't'oh eh kon. Uh, na'ki'de'ah'da'st'se kon nih'ike'ni nih'yn'eh. So ah ye'egot' kon azee'egi nih'ich'ek'oda'ali'ah. Eh ben'ach'eh'eh kon ah'nd'ahl'neh. Di nal'ya'ba'van'go'da. Ak'oh ol'tcha'egi eh at'oh ah'nd'ahl'neh ta'bin'in'agi. Nah'ach'chnen eh at'oh ba'da'st'se ta'at'oh nd'eh Washington deh. Ah'khoda'ani'ra'ti'ze'eh. Uh, ba'da'do'tse'egi. Jo'eh'ya'ya'da'st'i'ni'da'ch'egi shi'n bin'in'na. Eh bin'in'na ol'tcha'ah handi kon. Uh, do'eh ya'ta'ol't, le' school'undah'sen'elo. Uh, kon ol't'chnen'ta'ol'tcha'da'do'leh. Eh'ah'ha'gon doh ta'ol'tcha'da'do'leh. Da'no'ot'ah jo'be'has'ani'ad'eli'ah. Y'den'ebi'ke'yah'p'ka'oh. So eh un'ich'el'p'eh'oz'en'doh desh'ke'eh'oh sh'una. Ah'do di'inni'ah'ah'nd'ahl'ya'ri'shin'ig'ya. Eh'ya le' ah'sla'han'de'it'le'oh. Ah'sla'han'da'it'le'oh eh'ya ash'la'tz'adah'en'el't'oh eh'ot'ah. Ah'do'ya'go eh'ot'ahl'han'de'it'le't'oleh. Ak'ron'eh nih'ich'eh'no ni'ze'ev'kit'da'st'i'oh de'ya. N'da'had'ol'ni'ad'oh. Uh, da'din'ich'eh'ya. N'da'i din'ich'eh'cafe'eh'resh'na'pas'fu'da da't'eh'egi. Eh'ro ah'nd'at'ol'ni'ak'ron'eh. Ah'shin'ego eh shi'n eh'ah'de'el'bed'eh'has'zen'do'leh. Ah kui'shin'de'eh'ya. Yah'han'ak'hat'oleh'lo da'ay'ah'do'leh. Jo'eh'ro ah'nd'ahl'ya. Di, um, nal'ya'ba'van'je'do'ah'hot'ah. Uh, ne'ni'ich'el'bed'eh'has'zen'be'has'eg'oj'ag'oh'ya. Ah'alt'seh'ot'et'ni. La'eh eh'ya. Uh, nih'ike'ni y'den'eh kon eh'da'ch'eg'oh. Al'tcha'ot'et'ni. Aro la'ch'ag'oh'nda yahan'ach'et'ah. Jo'eh'ro oh't'ah eh'ya. Uh, bel'na't, bel'na't'azni'idoh eh shi'non'ich'el'bed'eh'has'zen'do'leh y'den'ebi'ke'yah'p'ka'oh. So eh'eh'ot'ah eh'ya y'den'ek'ech'eh'eh'atz'eh'oh'ige. Nih'ich'eh'ah'schan'eh ede'sh'la'do'lesh'eh'oh sh'una. Uh, ak'oh. Bel'ag'ani'ek'ech'sh'ido'lesh. I want to, um, transition to, um, English. Today we had two meetings. Uh, we weren't able to do the 10:00 AM Town Hall. That's why we're doing it right now. Appreciate the 200, over almost 300 people viewing today. Uh, we did a Town Hall, um, agency-wide meeting. On the federal monies that have come to the Navajo. And that we're also expecting to the Navajo Nation. So if you get a chance, go back on our social media page. If you want to get an overview on the CARES Act funds. 714 million. What was it used for? What projects were done? Uh, what's still remaining? And then the American Rescue Plan Act. We haven't get the money yet from Washington DC. But once we get it. There are plans from the local chapters and local leadership. As well as the Navajo Nation to put a lot of those monies in infrastructure. Waterline, electricity, broadband telecommunication. Uh, um, housing and transportation. Better roads and things like that. So if you get a chance, go back to that. Or if you want to watch it live tomorrow, there'll be two. 9:00 AM and at 1:00 PM tomorrow. Uh, to give an update on the monies that are coming from the federal government for the Navajo people. So if you put up the first slide Eli, first slide there. Just to give you an overview of how many. Uh, how much, uh, people have been, uh, affected. In terms of catching the virus. And that is, uh, 30,000, uh, 470 people. Who, uh, have caught the virus since the start of the pandemic. And, um. 1,273 of our Navajo people have caught the virus. And I want to say congratulations. I know we're not supposed to celebrate. But it's always good to recognize a milestone. Ladies and gentlemen, today we got word that there are zero cases and zero deaths. And that's because of each and every one of you. Congratulations, good job for the Navajo people, uh, you know. And adhering to these public health orders. Again, zero cases, zero deaths in 24 hours. Um, if you go to the next slide, it just shows you again the progression. Uh, compared to the United States. And this one here just shows you. I think Eli, if you go to the next slide, I think it's the, uh, the chart. Yeah, the chart that shows the, uh, the, uh, the numbers each day. You can see we are very, we had a very low, low numbers. Uh, these past few weeks. And it's because, I truly believe it's because of the vaccination. You know, today Johnson &amp; Johnson, um, have said that, you know, it's okay to get, uh, the shot. You know, 4,000 Navajos received the Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, over 4,000. Not one of our Navajo people had any negative reaction to this. Of course, in the country, over, you know, millions of people got, uh, the J&amp;J. And just a handful of people got this blood clot, uh, negative reaction. So we, we believe it's safe and so does the CDC. It's only one shot. If you're interested in one shot. And we're going to really put an emphasis on, uh, vaccination again. I know it's at a, oh, people are either vaccinated or some people are still on the fence. You know, uh, you see the numbers. It shows you that the vaccinations do work. We just encourage many because the more people we get vaccinated. You know, we get to herd immunity. And we're able to open and open to our visitors. And so let's make that a goal. To get 70, 75% of our Navajo people vaccinated. Here on the Navajo Nation. The next slide just shows you the comparison. As I always show, the two lines, the, uh, orange or the brown line and the blue line. The orange line indicates the Navajo Nation. The blue line is the United States of America's own comparison. Just look at that way towards the right there. We're, uh, we're very low in COVID-19 cases. And throughout the United States, there are still, uh, increases in cases. Uh, in some parts of the United States of America. If you, oh, turn on the news, look at what's happening in India right now. By the way, uh, we had some masks that were made. And, uh, I think everybody has at least five masks. Every Navajo citizen. Uh, an average of five masks each. And many people are refusing some of the masks that were made because they, they had plenty. So what we're going to do, ladies and gentlemen, is we're going to donate those homemade, handmade masks. To the people of India. Those that were donated and those that were, we also made here on the Navajo Nation. Let, let's help out our brothers and sisters on the other side of the world as well. Cause they're going through a difficult time right now. If you go to the next slide. It shows you a breakdown. Of the doses, the distributions that are happening in comparison. Between the US and the Navajo Nation. And there on the next slide, it says total doses distributed. Uh, in the United States of America, 290 million plus. Were sent out to all the territories and states. And 228 million plus were given. Shots were given. So number of people who receive both doses or fully vaccinated. Is 94 million, uh, plus. Now, US all across the country percent fully vaccinated. That means they got two shots, 28.5%. Now, the percent administered, that says nice 79%. That's the total doses at the top and what was given. 79% was given. So that's a pretty high number, uh, US-wide. Now look at the Navajo Nation. 247,165 was sent to the Navajo Nation. Uh, 216,293 were given. Now 94,833. That number is thought, is slowing down a little bit. But those are the folks that have been fully vaccinated, ladies and gentlemen. So percent fully vaccinated, 43.8%. Here on the Navajo Nation. Percent administered, that means what we received, that, that we put into the arms. 87.5% have been given. Now, let me just, uh, give you a little perspective. This percentage, the 43.8% percent fully vaccinated and percent administered. 87.5%. That's all the Navajos. That go to the IHSS or the 638 facilities. 638 facilities are like Sayotso Medical Center, Sage Memorial, Tubus City, Winslow. You know, those are self-government, uh, facilities. So people, Navajo people that live off the Navajo Nation. Do go to these healthcare facilities in and around the Navajo Nation. So in 2019, the IHSS said that, Navajo IHSS said 200. There are 243,323 charts. People who use the Navajo area IHSS. Now keep in mind. These are adults and children combined. So if you were to take out the children, cause they're not getting vaccinated. That's the 25% of that 240,000. So the adult population, if you take the children out, is 180,242. Uh, and that's people on, 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 on and off the Navajo Nation. So that's where you get the, the, uh, the percentage of about 50%. Over 50% of that 240,000, 240,000 have been, uh, vaccinated. So that's a good number. Over half of our population have been, uh, uh, got, received both, both doses. Now, if you were to just count only the Navajo residents. Meaning Navajo people living on the Navajo Nation. It's estimated that there's 175,000 Navajo residents living on actual Navajo land. You take the 25% of the 16 and under. That's 131,250 adults on the Navajo Nation, on Navajo land. So based on that. If you were to say how many people have been fully vaccinated? That's about 71.5%. But we're, we're still trying to verify that. And what we want to do is get to 75%. To get us closer to herd immunity. That's not too far off. So I just encourage our Navajo people to get vaccinated. I know some people are on the fence, you know, let's do it for our families. Let's reopen. We can get up to 75% and even higher. We can reopen our nation to our visitors. Uh, so that we can begin our economy because we'll, we'll, we'll be protected here on the Navajo Nation. Um, and so I just wanted to share that with you. If you go to the next slide, it shows you the United States of America here. Uh, red, yellow, uh, red, orange and yellow. Uh, and low risk is green. I don't think we see any green. But a lot of yellows, Arizona. Um, and New Mexico, California. Uh, oranges, you got a lot of oranges there, Utah, Nevada, Texas. And you got a red. In Colorado. We heard that Colorado is seeing a significant increase in COVID cases. Especially these new variants that are, are being identified. If you go to the next slide, Eli. Uh, as you know, the Navajo Nation is currently in yellow. The Public Health Emergency Order will be, uh, shared, uh, shortly. And. Um, Dr. Jim will talk a little bit about that. But if you look at the next, uh, chart there for PowerPoint. It does indicate there that, um, we are in yellow. And cases have decreased over the last seven days. And testing, testing is readily available. If you look at the percentage, 5% to 7.9%. Um, public health. There are five contact tracers. Uh, daily new cases. And hospitals, staff and patient ICU beds is at less than 75%. So we're not having too many people going to the hospital on COVID-19. So wanted to share that with you. And then lastly. The Public Health Emergency Order. The new one that was, uh, issued out on April 22nd. And that moved us from orange to yellow status. Now what does that mean? Um, first of all, it tells us to remain vigilant. Cause there's some neighboring states that seen an increase in cases. Especially the variants, you know, the, the very, the UK variant. The California variant have been identified here on the Navajo. The UK in western part. And the, um, California variant in the Gallup Service Unit area, northern. Uh, part of the Navajo Nation as well. So we, we gotta stay. So we, we gotta stay the course, ladies and gentlemen. CMA sixteen twenty, that's the resolution number that say the Navajo Nation remains closed to our visitors for the duration of the public health emergency. So our visitors are still uh, not allowed and some of the destinations are still closed. Um, we just wanna be safe, you know, be safe and be cautious. We can't jump the gun and open it all back up soon. And I, I, I know our visitors understand what the Navajo Nation went through. And we appreciate their patience. Uh, for the Navajo people that are living on the Navajo Nation, uh, there's a fifty percent now, we went from twenty-five percent occupancy, now fifty percent of maximum occupancy allowed for most business, restaurants and dining facilities. Drive-in curbside are still permissible. Restaurants uh, with permanent outdoor dining may provide outdoor dining at fifty percent of maximum occupancy. So if there's uh, ten chairs, you know, you can have five, five-chair occupancy, fifty percent. Just to give you an example, I'm sure there's some that are more than that. Uh, restaurants with permanent outdoor dining are allowed to have up to ten outdoor tables. As long as there's social distancing and those same um, criterias to abide by. Uh, fifty percent in the Navajo casinos for Navajo citizens. Uh, again, restaurants may provide indoor dining uh, at twenty-five percent too. Uh, occupancies. Marinas and parks are allowed to open to twenty-five percent maximum occupancy to Navajo Nation residents. Museums are allowed to open, and I think the next public health order, if everything stills low, uh, we will reopen our uh, zoo, versus only one zoo in Winter Park. Uh, one thing that's not currently allowed is still the flea markets, the roadside markets and the youth programs. And so those are being discussed right now by our public health professionals to put some uh, guy, guidelines in place. Gyms and recreation facilities, movie theaters are not allowed at this point as well. But we are looking at the um, the guideline, guidelines so that we can have some protocols in place if we, when we reopen that. And of course, wearing mask is still a priority, public mandatory. Uh, the daily curfew's hour remain from eleven PM to five AM. Stay home from eleven PM to five AM. I did mention the UK variant, the California variant, still being monitored here on Navajo. Um, and for gatherings, fifteen or fewer people are permitted. All unvaccinated or vaccinated people should wear masks, as I mentioned earlier. Traditional ceremonies of fifteen or fewer people are permitted with the guidelines. Churches and other houses of worship are fifty percent or less since they're stationary with uh, seats. So fifty percent occupancy. Uh, drive-in gatherings up to fifty vehicles are permitted if the organizers and participants adhere to require, to the requirements. Such gatherings include parking lot gatherings for internet access, uh, religious services, those outdoor like uh, the tents, funeral services, graduations. Uh, but the graduations, there's some guidelines being put in place. We're praying that uh, these numbers stay low so that we can do graduations. I know graduations are coming up quick, so the, the team is look, working on those protocols. Wash your hands, wear masks, social distancing and staying at home as much as possible continues, ladies and gentlemen. So Akon da atobi kini ikha da, hadaino lne shikero shunna ashon. Lere e da nihinash bela ga na, ala ita da ilha. To nihitze do, nihitchi, keda sti akon tchadikha. Ancha alchshenpa, nihikepa. Hot a, eh, banzadekhi sto, da nele. Do eh, anichide nchada. Tinlego, nihikene nihidne. Eh, hot a, eh, ya, ba deitl shno. Uh, bitchehaszi do, bitchehasitzi, shu, bichinash, ini, fulfillmentas. Hot a, eh, ya, nchanaya do, kodolana danitsi, ini do, bitchaashtan edelna, edelia. Di beshitchi, twhada nas kodol, nehdi, broad be interneta, jolnadas, nishto, nihikene nihidne, ba da di no, da beniye, bichasitki. So hot a, eh, ya, nihitchehananas si do, leh, shikero shunna. Adada holiya do, uh, lke da do, i do, lka natcha ashon. Adon naxtwa do, do, ni gi do, nihidoo, nihidoo, na tan, naxtwa ilsono, da, shunabeh. Vice President Byron Lizer do, bichinayi il, ini gi do, nina tan, do, do, ni, it's a, it's a day, da, beni gi. Division Directors, eh do, ye go, nchan da, nisho da. Eh do, nihidoo, nchabidini do, leh, baltsko kodol, shikero shunna. So kultso shi, hanan, nihidoo, kona nishla do, do, kodoshi, uh, shitu, Dr. Jill Jim, nihidoo, hananatzi do, leh, Dr. Jill Jim.
Thank you, President, um, for your kind words and reminder of COVID nineteen. Shunadoni, President, do, shichin, do, do, nihidoo, do, kashima, Dr. Fowler, kashima, so, dingzundo. Nihidoo, she, Dr. Jill Jim, and she, do, the Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. Um, done the, and shenai, look, uh, shenai, tachini, do, shenai, do, shenai, do, shenai, do, do, na, do, eh, esinasha, do, hot a, sansha. Ashi, it's, so, kadi, denek, ete, des, do, di, uh, kadi, nhanani, enenigi, kadi, nchada, do, segi. Uh, is eh, bitch, eh, di, bakhosin, swaginas, eh, tsada, kadi, um, adon, cha, atse, gushi. Banzake, so, di, kadi, nihika, do, lwo, lot, eh, teitada. Um, ashin, so, zenegi, do, kadi, nihikai, donlani, eh, benatchi, xi. A do, um, di CDC, hoga, nigi, kadi, guidelines, ilagi, do, non. Do, kadi, President Biden, di, nidi gi, kadi, a, kualgeni, kadi, niseto, nishit, nishit, do, beges, kadi, go, um, ka, atse, go, nenegi. Eh, she, ha, she, um, di, do, kadi, um, recommend, eh, di, da, 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 yeah. Ashi, hot a, nihit, do, niseto, beges, kadi, o, she, daya. Um, what, um, it's, they, khat, eh, um, Public Health Emergency Order, gay, kadi. Um, the Public Health Order Number Ten, eh, eh, kadi, shlot, kadi, fifteen people can gather and take all the precautions that they need, oh, kadi, baka. There's also the drive-in gathering that President Nez mentioned as well. Um, so I just wanted to just reiterate the importance of getting vaccinated. Um, I know that the guidelines that, or recommendations from the Biden and Harris administration is um, providing recommendations to gather, um, while even though you're vaccinated and um, small gatherings, what they've said, it's not necessarily for big crowds like in stadiums and conferences. Um, those type of gatherings, you should still wear your mask. And also, it's referring to outdoor activities that are safer, not really indoors as well. So if you're not vaccinated, um, you probably need to take all the precautions, not probably, you should take all the precautions that you need to, um, as you uh, want to reduce your risk of transmission and also getting other individuals sick as well. And we do receive daily updates across um, the United States regarding um, cases and CDC. Today reported, there is a hopeful decline of cases by twenty-one percent. There's a decline of nine percent for hospital admissions and also a daily death um, decrease of six percent as well. So um, that's across the United States as reported by CDC. So it's still important to get your second shot as well to be fully vax, vaccinated. I know we also get questions about homebound patients or those that are high risk. If you are out there and you are not able to get vaccinated, um, if you're able to work with your community health representative or public health nurse to get you an appointment um, and contacting your local health facility, that would be one way to ensure that all the homebound individuals um, that are not able to go to a vaccine um, site or um, also to get an appointment. Um, they can ac, acquire a vaccine that way. Another, um, I'm gonna share a PowerPoint here. These are just some general messaging that um, I often do. So I'll go through these quickly as President Nez mentioned. And also all the health professionals on the call today will reiterate that wearing your mask in public is still important. We still have our Public Health Emergency Order that still supports the um, wearing of pub, uh, wearing of your face mask out in public. Maintaining your distance as well, making sure there's enough distance in between. Especially if you're visiting with someone outs, um, outside your household. So just remember that, um, the more unsure of transmitting that, um, the virus could be related to not knowing if the other person is vaccinated. But you can also still get COVID even though you're vaccinated as well. So there's always that misinformation. We need to ensure everyone needs to get um, vaccinated, but also continue to take all these precautions. As President mentioned, we are in the yellow status as of Monday here and there. And so there will be some mention as um, of questions. So if you have um, questions regarding the reopening, go to the Navajo reopening page or also call the Health Command Operations Center at nine two eight eight seven one um, seven zero one four as well. And we should be able to update the yellow um, gating or the gating or the reopening section for yellow. It's not updated right now, so just wait for that information. But you should be able to look for the Public Health Emergency Order Number Nine on the Department of Health webpage. We also have talked about these variants um, that have been detected on the Navajo Nation. So just um, be cautious that there are these variants that have caused an increase in other states. And so we just want to just make sure that um, our citizens here on the Navajo Nation know that these variants are out there in several service units right now. So just take all the precaution that you need. And that includes making sure that you wear your mask correctly out in public. I am also thankful of all their relatives and um, friends and individuals living on the Navajo Nation, always wearing their mask. It's still very important. And um, as President mentioned, um, that's all, um, all the numbers that have shown the decrease in cases is really up to us on date. And so we should pat our shoulders on the back and understand that we are doing a good job. But there's still areas of improvement that we can all do. And that means following the gathering limits as President mentioned. And also the Public Health Emergency Orders have stated the limitation of gathering and also um, allowing the fifty vehicles. So as the graduations are um, coming upon us here very soon, there will be um, guidance that's forthcoming for graduations. And depending on the numbers, we'll determine um, what kind of recommendations we'll, we will have around gathering. And then as a reminder for all businesses, we want to encourage businesses and schools to report any exposures to the Navajo Department of Health, um, report exposure tab here so that we can ensure that contact tracing is, is done appropriately and, and a timely matter. So um, most often, some of these cases that are positive usually get reported to the local health facility. Um, but for business, all businesses and schools, they should be um, reporting to the portal as well on the Department of Health webpage as I mentioned. Also, um, during this pandemic, we just want to ensure everyone to stay healthy. So um, some measures around mental health illnesses, just to take some um, tips here by taking care of your emotional health. Um, doing things like taking breaks from watching, reading or listening to news. You can take care of your body by um, stretching, exercising, eating healthy, getting enough sleep and avoiding alcohol use and drugs. Also make time to unwind and do activities you enjoy and talk with people you trust about your concerns and how you are feeling. Connect with your community or faith-based organizations or consider connecting online with social media or, or by phone or mail. As the weather is um, warming up, you can find ways to enjoy the tribal parks and recreation and also um, as those are now allowed to be open. So enjoy um, your weekend and days. I know that the weather will warm up pretty soon. I know we have a, a cold front that we're experiencing right now, but otherwise the safest place is at home. Those are the messages that we often provide to reduce your risk. Uh, we are still um, in a shelter in place, even though we're allowing access to certain services. But um, in order to keep the numbers down and to keep us safe, um, just know that we uh, want to encourage everyone to consider staying home and avoid unnecessary or limit unnecessary travel to stop the spread of COVID nineteen. We are still in a pandemic. We um, are still experiencing numbers that are sparsely um, throughout the day, um, throughout the week. So I just encourage everyone to take all the precautions that they can. So I just want to thank you for joining us this evening. And I wanted to introduce um, Mr. Del Yazi. He's with the Navajo Epicenter. I'm pretty sure that most of our um, panelists or presenters today will repeat everything. And it's always good to repeat everything from um, in multiple ways, from multiple persons and and be, and all of us would just need to be a good listener. And also just be reminded of the importance of um, reducing the spread of COVID nineteen, even though our numbers are very low. And that will take every one of us. So um, Del, um, do you want to take it away now here?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen here. Okay, hopefully you can see the gating measures, um, dashboard. If not, please let me know. Um, yeah, good evening, everyone. Yeah, eh, uh, my name is Del. I'm with the Navajo Epidemiology Center. And also with the Health Command Operations Center Epidemiology Team for COVID. And I'm from Cove, Arizona, and my clans are Kinkachitni, Kachitni, Maidishkizni and Hashkantoe. Those are my four clans. Uh, what you're looking at here is our gating matrix. This is uh, our indicators that we follow or give us guidance based on the numbers that, that we um, you know, see, analyze every week. And the far left column is the indicators that we, that we look at each week that allows us to, you know, which color we fall under. So we are currently in the yellow, the level yellow um, column as our numbers currently fit in that particular um, category, the yellow color. So um, and this is uh, our Epi curve. Um, over time from up here, starts from January first all the way to our last analytical period, which is last Thursday, March twenty-second. As you can see, we are on this downward trend um, since January or middle, mid-January or so. And we've been going down and apparently And we've been going down and currently continue to see low numbers. So that is great news, although our numbers do kind of fluctuate every week, but they remain low numbers. So we are very, very thankful for that. And this part of the dashboard is our, the heat map showing Navajo Nation by IHS Service Areas and also our border states, the four corner states. So if you hover over these areas so that you can see the numbers. So as far as, I'll start with the states. Colorado is the only state in our region that continues to see high number of cases. Over a seven-day period, they saw over 11,000 COVID cases. And so that puts them in this high-risk darker shade brown color. And then Utah also, you know, they all, they all continue to see cases, but Utah is less than Colorado, 2,700. Arizona is about 4,700. And then New Mexico about almost 1,400 over a seven-day time period. And I should mention the seven-day time period is April 16th to April 22nd. And then if we look at the IHS Service Areas on Navajo, Crown Point Service Area is, you know, this lightest shade color, meaning they saw the least amount of cases or as it shows here, there are like no cases. So and then on the other end of the spectrum is Fort Defiance, Chinli, and Tubus City Service Areas did see some increase in cases over that seven-day time period. So they're in this darker shaded brown color. So that's our current situation as far as our bordering states and IHS Service Areas on for Navajo Nation. And then this, this is a chapter map. It's also a heat map. As you can see, the darker the color, they saw, they had more cases. This is bottom away gap. I think there's like 17 chapters that are in this the darkest shaded brown color, meaning they saw an increase in cases that were, their incidence rate was over 100. So bottom away gap is one of them. Pibeto, Tonalia, Shanto, Black Mesa, Pinion, Chinli, Mini Farms, Round Rock, Tali Wheatfields, Ganado, Fort Defiance, Twin Lakes, Rock Springs, Ayuti Canyon, Hogback, Pajule, and Reima. I think there's like 17 chapters that saw increasing cases. And Dr. Jim mentioned, we're seeing cases throughout the nation. It's not just one particular area. It's cases pretty much across Navajo. So I'll go to the next tab. This is the testing, the test positivity and the testing volume are, on the last day, on April 22nd, our test positivity for COVID was at 5.28%. It's a little bit above five, but the average for the seven day is less than five, is about 4.7%. So we're, as an average of seven day, test positivity is under five. And the testing volume per day on April 22nd was around 430 tests being conducted on that day across Navajo. So testing is ongoing. Our percent positivity remains around five. So that's, that's good. And then this, I'll focus on this darker green line. This is Navajo Nation as a whole. Here's the legend, Navajo Nation overall. Our hospital bed occupancy is at about 46%, which is below this 80% threshold. So that's great. And then the ICU bed occupancy is for Navajo Nation as a whole is at about 66%. Again, below the 80% threshold capacity. So that's a good sign. Then this is contact tracing, public health capacity. Navajo Nation at this bottom, this table here, the bottom row, Navajo Nation as a whole is about, we have about 196 contact tracers currently on the nation, which equates to about 12 contact tracers for every new daily case. And we like to be above five, so which we are, and the contact tracing capacity is sufficient currently. So again, that's great news. And the last tab is vaccine. Vaccine is a hot topic on the nation. We want everyone to get vaccinated who are, who is eligible. So I'll just go over these percentages up here. The percent of total user population initiating vaccination is at 52%. Percent of eligible population initiating vaccination at 67%. Percent of total user population fully vaccinated is at 40%. Percent of eligible population fully vaccinated is about 52%. So and this is just a mosaic color plot. You know, the, the size of the box is proportional to the number of people initiating vaccinations. So Shiprock is the biggest box here. So they have over 39,000 people who've initiated vaccination. So and then on, on down the line, Gallup, Chinli, Chuba, and so on. So this is, so this is the latest numbers as of last Thursday. And we do this, as I said, analyze the numbers every week. And our numbers currently fall within this yellow, yellow level. And so we'll remain there until our numbers tell us otherwise. So that's our, our quick gating measures update, and I'll stop here. Thank you.
We'll move on to Captain Brian Johnson. Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Fowler. Good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Used to doing these earlier in the day and sometimes in the afternoon, but we're in the evening hours and it's great to be here with everybody. And again, this is Captain Johnson, served as the Acting Deputy Area Director for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service in St. Michael's, Arizona, and worked alongside Ms. Roseland So, as well as, well, Ms. Roseland So at the Area Director, as well as Dr. Eretta Crittison as the Chief Medical Officer, and have been with certainly the Navajo Nation throughout the pandemic and have certainly seen some positive signs here as we've moved forward over the last several months. Just wanted to say, certainly want to congratulate the Navajo Nation people and, and you know, I think it's pretty exciting as we listen to Mr. Del Yazi give some updates on the, on the gating measures, talking about some of the important measures that we look at. It's like a dashboard on a vehicle. We have to understand where we've been and where we're going and how things are looking, are, are things running right? And certainly some positive signs over the last month and or two. As we've seen, the, the color code change from purple to red to orange down to yellow. We're standing at that moderate level presently, of course, with the pandemic, and we're just certainly hoping we get to that green level, not too distant future. So very, very positive signs, but the reason those positive signs exist is because of the leadership that's been involved in this pandemic throughout. The partnering that has happened across the board in the local region and of course, working with the people, whether we're talking about communities or chapters or agencies, and we're talking about the Navajo people who have, who have listened, who have shared their information within, with their own families as, as we moved through the pandemic. So want to say thank you because without everyone's help, this would have not have been possible to be at this point during the pandemic. So certainly appreciate that. As, as was discussed, we're, we're presently standing in the yellow phase and, and that phase just started, was just announced on Monday, just yesterday. And it lessens the restrictions that we've seen as we've come through the, the purple, red, and orange phases, and it gives us a little bit more opportunity to, to be out and about. But at the same time, as Dr. Jim shared, that it's important that, you know, we do this in a very smart way in terms of how we move forward. If, if we don't need to be in large groups, we shouldn't be in large groups. We should, to the extent possible, continue to, to stay at home. And of course, we're, we're at a time of year when the weather is so much better than it was earlier as we went through the fall and the winter and early spring. We're still in that spring season, but the weather is much nicer and it gives us an opportunity at our homes to perhaps spend a little more time there outdoors where the risk of transmission is certainly less as compared to being indoors throughout the winter months. So this is something to, to think about. Again, as we see the case numbers come down, you know, kind of in a summary fashion over the last month, we've seen these case numbers come down, but, and we were very fortunate because on a number of days, what we've seen is in terms of COVID-19, the cases are less than 10 cases per day. However, on occasion, as Dell shared with us, we, we've seen some bump ups or some upticks in the number of cases. And, you know, just more recently, we, on a couple of different days, we've seen, you know, the number of 20 cases or so. And then at one point when we combined, I believe it was Saturday and Sunday, it was, I believe it was 30 cases or so. And so that becomes concerning because while we're doing well in terms of the overall decreases in COVID-19 cases, those are stark reminders that things can change quickly if we're not careful with how we're handling this situation. And we've come so far over the last several months as a, as a group, as a team here on Team Navajo, and it's important that we continue to really, you know, watch and monitor and again, be smart about the way we're moving forward because we certainly don't want those upticks happening as there's certainly a tendency for all of us being social creatures. We always like to try to get together with groups and, and that can certainly, in this case, help increase our risk of those number, number of cases going up quickly. So please, something to think about as, again, as we continue to move forward. And I, again, I couldn't be more proud to be a part of this group that's worked with the federal healthcare facilities, the tribal healthcare facilities, the Navajo Nation. We talked about the leaders who have, have really, you know, been talking up to Washington, have been sharing information about what was happening here locally. And without the executive and the legislative branches of the Navajo Nation really making sure that the information's getting out there and being as transparent as possible, again, we wouldn't be where we're at today on this. So thank you all for that. With the Navajo area, we, we continue again to watch across and monitor our hospitals. We, we meet routinely with our leadership at our various facilities and share information and just make sure we're on the same page as to how we're moving forward with our services. And so for example, during the pandemic, where many of our clinics were shut down just due to infection control concerns, you know, that was one of the hardest things I know for all of us to do in the healthcare business is to shut down clinics that we're so used to operating. And fortunate to say that those clinics are and have been opening over the last several weeks. And that's again, another positive sign that we can get back to providing patient care and making sure that we're taking care of the people we serve. So we're certainly happy about that. Again, when we talk about the vaccinations or the vaccines, our saying is let's reach community immunity, protect yourself, protect your family, and protect your elders. That's something that we're using as our vision in terms of where we're going. And so we're just wanting to make sure that we're all doing what we can to make sure that we're protecting one another, whether we're talking about our family, our direct family, our distant family, or our colleagues or friends. The more individuals that we have vaccinated, whether we're talking about the Moderna, the Pfizer, or the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, the better off we all are as a people. And so we, we again, thank you for all the turnout that has been and has continued to take place across the, the Navajo Nation. Want to thank all the tribal facilities and for the work that they've done in terms of the vaccination clinics, some of the drive-through clinics and the federal staff as well, and for the people showing up and sometimes in long lines as, as we worked our way through. And some of those days were quite long. We continue to hold vaccine clinics and some of those to this day are, you know, in some cases they're, they're not scheduled, they're walk-in appointments a lot of times. Other times we do have scheduled vaccination clinics that continue. And I do encourage you to, you know, reach out if you have not been vaccinated. It is important. We're, we're not past this thing at this point. We're not, we're not past the possibility of, of having another wave. We certainly don't want that to happen. So it's, it's so important that we continue for, for those individuals who have not been vaccinated, certainly we encourage you to, to consider that and to look at the risks and the, and the benefits, benefits being protecting the people around you, protecting yourself, which is a, is a huge thing to do. There was some questions that we've had, you know, it was announced that Johnson, Johnson and Johnson vaccine went on pause or was halted for a while as President Nez mentioned because of some concerns about some blood clots in a, in a small number of individuals after thousands and thousands of vaccinations were provided. Here on the Navajo Nation, we had received as many as 4,600 doses of the Johnson and Johnson and approximately 2,900 have been administered over a period of time. So that's including both to the public and to our employees, so 2,900 individuals. And I'm happy to say, you know, that, that we're unaware of any negative reactions along those lines here, but we do know at the national level there was some concern. But so it was halted for a while and, and now we, it's been opened back up for use. And we still consider all of the vaccines to be safe and effective. And to date, I was able to mention last Thursday, I believe, or last Wednesday actually, that we finally hit over a million vaccine doses being administered across the Indian health system, which was a huge milestone in terms of where we started and where we have come. And we continue to provide vaccines at a high rate and we're looked at around the country as, as one of the leaders in providing these vaccinations and how we've handled the COVID-19 situation. So again, another congratulations, not only for the Navajo Nation to be coming off of the orange phase to the yellow phase, but then just being recognized nationally for all the great work that's been done here. Navajo Nation Department of Health through Dr. Jill Jim's leadership and President Nez working together and Vice President Lizer and so many of the partners. I think a lot of times we don't mention John Hopkins enough in terms of what the, the assistance and direction that they've provided, as well as our tribal providers, leaders. We really do appreciate those partnerships. Just wanted to mention that, you know, in terms of federal funding, you know, just for the general public to know that you probably heard the acronym ARPA, which stands for American Rescue Plan Act. And really happy to say that the IHS is a healthcare system received, is receiving $4.3 billion in new resources. That's 4.3 billion with a B. And that is certainly a huge boost to a healthcare system that was very taxed during And that is certainly a huge boost to a healthcare system that was very taxed during the COVID-19 pandemic. And it's great that we, in turn, will be sharing, of course, those dollars with our tribal partners, healthcare facilities, as President Nez had mentioned as well, places like Fort Defiance and Tuba City and Winslow and Sage Memorial and others. We all utilize those healthcare dollars to, you know, improve the health of the people we serve. And it's important to realize, I mean, for example, because of that funding that's coming down, $600 million in vaccine-related activities will be able to be provided, $1 billion of funding to increase vaccinations, detecting, diagnosing, monitoring, and mitigating infections in communities, $2 billion across the healthcare system for the loss of revenue. In other words, when I talked earlier about shutting down clinics to prevent unnecessary infections during the pandemic, it was so important that, you know, we lost revenue, all of us lost revenue, that helps us support our healthcare facilities. So this money coming down helps inject or put more money in the system. And that, in turn, helps us provide, continue to provide services and hopefully at a higher rate of services as well. Over $140 million is going to be pointed towards information technology and telehealth. And that's something, you know, telehealth is a type of healthcare that has really been important during this pandemic. And it's something that we did before the pandemic, but not as much as we do now. And so that gives providers the opportunity to treat or to provide treatment through telehealth via computer or video capabilities, which is something that's improving access to care for so many people. And so we're excited. And of course, I didn't mention all the line items that were funded with the $4.3 billion in new resources, but I just suffice it to say that we're definitely better off for, you know, receiving those dollars and being able to maintain our patient care. You know, I could go on about many of the things that were already discussed, but I know we have some other folks who are also on the Facebook Live session this evening. And I want to give them an opportunity. But before I jump off here, I just want to say, again, congratulations to the Navajo people, to those partners who have helped to get us to this yellow point, phase yellow. And let's do what we can to stick together. We've stuck together this far. Let's stick together as we move and hopefully we'll get down to that green phase by continuing to do our part, getting vaccinated, wearing our masks, watching our distance, trying not to be in those large groups of people. If we're smart about the way we handle this and continue working towards that, hopefully we'll be down to that green level in no time. But also, as we've been mentioning here recently, just as another side note, certainly, again, this is the time of year for hantavirus and hantavirus prevention messages. And as we know, that particular disease comes from the deer mouse population. And we're all familiar with it here because it's something that is naturally occurring. And we just want to make sure that people understand if you come across rodent droppings or, you know, for example, a shed near your home and you think it might have rodents in it, it's important to wear a mask. It's important to use bleach water solution to do cleaning. It's important to just be wise and to think about anywhere those droppings or rodent urine might be to protect yourself from that, as we certainly don't want people to be infected with the hantavirus also. So stay safe, everyone, and thank you for the time. And I'm going to turn the time over to Dr. Amanda Burridge, who is a provider with the Tuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation. And again, I'll turn it over to Dr. Burridge. You have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. President and Dr. Jim, for inviting me to take part in the town hall tonight. As I said, my name is Dr. Amanda Burridge. I'm a pediatrician in Tuba City. I'm also the Epidemic Response Team Lead here in Tuba City. Additionally, I've been helping with the Navajo Nation Health Command, Epi and Data Translation Team, and co-leading that with Dell, who spoke earlier. And as Dr. Johnson said, you know, it's been an amazing collaborative effort since the beginning and really has been many successes across the months. And so I do want to pause and celebrate that as well. So thank you for acknowledging all those successes. Many people have sort of talked about the key points, you know, I really want to emphasize vaccinations, like others have. I think from the clinical perspective, that's, you know, the most important thing we can do right now, in addition to masking and distancing and everything that we have been doing. But our focus to, as a healthcare entity, but also to you as individuals, is to increase vaccinations among yourself, among your families and friends, to help protect everyone, both your families, the community, and everyone around. As Dell had said, in terms of the numbers, we have seen a little bump in cases in the past week, and that's across Navajo Nation. Seventeen chapters saw increase in cases. A number of those are clusters, so related to family gatherings of some sort or another. So we are watching those closely, certainly trying to keep track of, you know, where the clusters are, where the exposures are, and trying to do contact tracing to stop the spread from those cases. But certainly keeping that in mind that it is definitely still here and at risk. So practice, you know, safe gatherings if somebody needs to gather. In good news, our hospitalizations, as Dell said, are still low. Thankfully, with vaccination, we're not seeing as many sick people and with the numbers low, but that is, you know, certainly a reassuring thing and a point to celebrate as well. Something that we've seen in Tuba City, and I'm guessing is, you know, true across Navajo Nation as well, most of the cases that we've seen recently are in unvaccinated people. So again, this is a reminder to be vaccinated. We're seeing the spread in unvaccinated people, while some of the people are ineligible children. Actually, the majority are people that could receive a vaccine, but for whatever reason have chosen or have not been able to get a vaccine yet. So definitely, again, important to get vaccinated. And as Dr. Johnson mentioned, in terms of the funding coming to Navajo Nation, so on the hospital level, we're using it to help increase our vaccinations, so offering vaccinations in different settings, trying to make it as accessible to our patient population as possible. We're also improving our contact tracing teams in terms of staffing efficiency, improving our testing capacity for COVID, and then also improving our healthcare facilities to make them as safe as possible, so improving ventilation, working on patient flow, and again, trying to get clinics open so people can come for their healthcare needs. And do want to emphasize that, you know, we are seeing patients and it is very safe to come to clinic, and we encourage people to come to clinic for any concerns that they may have, because we are here and it is safe to see patients. So just want to harp one more time on vaccination, since you guys are all listening to this town hall, you care about COVID. We ask that you, yourself, get vaccinated, but also reach out to friends and family. I mean, coming from people who care, your voice matters. And your voice matters because you care about them. When they get vaccinated, it protects them, it protects you, it protects your family and the community. So we'd appreciate your help in reaching out to people that may or may not be vaccinated and encouraging them that it's safe and effective. And I think one of the questions that's now, you know, has been coming up and, you know, will continue to come up, is which vaccine? How do I know which one to get? And I think talk with your healthcare provider about the options, but in the end, it's any vaccine that you can get will help protect you from COVID. We feel that all the vaccines are safe and they're all effective in protecting you from severe COVID. And so whichever one is available to you, and at this point, all the different healthcare facilities have plenty of vaccinations available. And so as Dr. Johnson said, reach out to your healthcare facility if you have any questions. I know here in Tuba City, we have lots of availability, walk-ins, are working to switch over to a drive-through model. There are blitzes coming up in the coming weeks, and I think that same is true across Navajo Nation. So I will stop there and I'm going to pass it to Dr. Hammett with Johns Hopkins. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, okay. Like you've heard from others this evening, I wanted to talk about a few important topics. My name's Laura Hammett, and I'm with the Johns Hopkins Center for American Indian Health. And I also serve as the Navajo Nation COVID-19 Testing Coordination Lead. And testing remains really important to contain the pandemic. I know there's less enthusiasm for testing now, but we still do need people to get tested in order to detect infection, which is what allows us to isolate and stop from sharing the virus with our loved ones, with our coworkers. People with symptoms and people who are close contacts, including those without symptoms, should continue to be tested. Testing can also help so that people can get appropriate treatment. There are monoclonal antibody treatments for people who have mild illness and who are at risk for developing severe disease or for being hospitalized. And these are very highly effective treatments. So getting testing can help to make sure that people have treatments and don't progress to more severe disease. In addition to diagnostic testing for people who are sick or who have been exposed, regularly scheduled screening testing for asymptomatic people in high priority groups is also important to prevent the silent spread of the virus. And the IHS and tribal health organizations just received an allotment from HHS of a home test kit called the Alum Home Test Kit that can be used for screening testing and will be rolled out by service units in the coming weeks. This is a test that can be performed at home and requires people to have a smartphone and internet access that can be performed in the home setting and provide results within 15 minutes. So that's something that can be available to help detect disease and prevent the spread of the virus. And as others have mentioned, vaccination remains a really critical tool to fight this virus. There are three vaccines that are available on the Navajo Nation, all of which are safe and highly effective. I think everybody is aware that the CDC and FDA recommended resuming use of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine following a temporary pause. That pause was due to reports of very rare but potentially serious blood clotting events among six vaccine recipients that were reported out of nearly seven million people who'd gotten the vaccine. So this is something that's occurring in fewer than one in a million people who've been vaccinated, a very rare event. But the FDA and the CDC, upon reviewing all of the data, have recommended continuing use of this vaccine because the vaccine's potential benefits far outweigh its known and potential risks. So this vaccine continues to be recommended. Again, these are all highly effective vaccines. And I think, you know, we've heard from a number of people on the call about the variants that are circulating right now. We've talked about variants on the town halls before. These variants are expected to occur naturally as the virus replicates. It will naturally accumulate some mutations. Some variants will emerge and then disappear. Some will emerge and persist. And we pay attention to these because some of them may, you know, have the ability to spread more quickly or to cause more severe illness. And the B.1.1.7 variant, which was first detected in the United Kingdom, has been detected on the Navajo Nation, as has the California variant. Both of these variants can spread more quickly. And the B.1.1.7 variant in particular is now responsible for around 60% of the cases in the United States. So this has very quickly become the dominant strain. But there were really positive results from the United Kingdom last week that showed that the Pfizer vaccine is highly protective against the UK variant. And the other vaccines have been shown to be effective as well. So vaccination will help slow the spread of this variant. Vaccination will protect people from severe disease. There's been a lot of speculation about herd immunity, and the exact amount of coverage that's required to achieve herd immunity is not known. But we do know, what we know about the coronavirus so far suggests that if we want to go back to a pre-pandemic lifestyle, we need at least 70 to 75% of the population to be immune in order to keep the rate of infection down. So we're really counting on everyone in the community that is eligible to get vaccine to do that. Navajo Nation is doing a great job with vaccination, and every dose helps to get us closer to herd immunity and helps to protect the community. I wanted to touch on just briefly what's happening globally with COVID-19. In the world, there are now over 147 million cases and over 3 million deaths from COVID-19. There is a new record high last week in terms of the weekly incidence. So this disease unfortunately is growing and expanding in some countries, and particularly people, I think, have heard about what's happening in India, which continues to set new global records in terms of daily incidents. And they're struggling with a lot of the same issues that other countries have experienced with difficulties in testing and compliance with precautions and having adequate resources to treat sick individuals and in getting vaccines rolled out. And it was really incredible to hear earlier on this town hall when President Nez mentioned donating homemade masks from the Navajo Nation to India. And I think this is one of many examples where the innovations from Navajo Nation and from other tribal communities have provided essential lessons for the world. And what tribal nations have achieved in the absence of adequate resources, I think, represents, you know, one of the most valiant battles in the country's war against COVID-19. I'll stop there and say thank you and good night, and we'll turn it over to Dr. Fowler.
Ahaha. Thank you, Dr. Hammett, Dr. Burridge, and Captain Johnson, and Mr. Dell Yaz, and Shiyaj. Ahaha. Kodo shee chidaas anana kaatnaash na'no lestee an hiyaaj. Ah, the epidemiology team is the Niki Asa'damo. Ah, na'atlech aden hisnaash na'he adi gedi measures deesna. Ah, je adi nasnehi. Eh, ah, jinaas kahi eh, adet ya'naash na'akoye goyades. Kichik edo shitna'kwa'eh ba'ahyeh nitzen. Ah, ro di tostrejun je ah, je eh, yadi. Depentsa'ho ah, je fahautso'je eh, ah, ati ayegodena'alkit. Akwande, di teshke zel in belnaas an teshke ah, ah, je chido. Ine, ah, je do ya'atza'akwa'eh ba'ahyeh nitzen. Ah, ro ICU, go'yej ah, je do ya'atza'akwa'eh di da'alkha. Ni nechni, ychnini gi ah, je bedadol na'inech kahi je ah, je do kapalahnel. Eh, do ba'ahyeh nitzen. Akwa'eh litsogi eh, bi iki kaido. Eh, se'ahatal ine, ah, na'cha'atal eh, tanchilna. Ah, ro ze'eln enadi kodo it'solertey. Lini gi kodo eh, zel in bel fahautso'je ah, je gi do eh, do cha'sine la. Kodo nichidna'eh. Nlini ba'ahyeh nitzen. Chala eh, nichilato'oh datne yandes kiri. Akwa'eh tanchisana'eh, eh, islatin kahautso'ye go'be nicherhot horsin. Do di rashi'oh khoten de ye goyantes kida'ashkhona'eh nichi chiton hishe'ah bedad espal. Ah, ro di la'slango, ah, ro ye'gon da. Keh eltsa'oh ah, jo'ah, ke'ho na'ah, je eh, ati na'alkha. Ah, ro zel in belnaash an do eh, do ati belte'eni nishto'ankilna. Ah, ro di se'ahatal ine, do eh, do ashkhona'eh ah, nichi belcho'je do. Bedanchi'roni dos, truidos san i danlini je eh, ba'ahhul'yan do eh, bedzankwa'eh ina'cha da'otzen nichilna. Ah, ro di tanchisana'eh, bisi ishtlisi bel fahautso'je ah, je zel in belnaash anigi. Eh, do eh, yeha'eh. Chala ah, je eh, ya'asa'ha. De mil so she'kune'la'ok eh, se'ahatal ya'eh ba'ahyeh nitzen. Ah, ro kodo ah, chano' belnede'ni shido'oh da'alkha. Johns Hopkins tabidi. Nini eh, do ye'go'be chik'eh yeha'eh. Ninitzilchala eh, kodo'ontaska. Ah, ro peso'ah, eh, no'dahay kinahaltgade'eh i'dahalna'eh. Eh, do eh, yeha'eh. Je eh, kodo benada'innisdo' benadachat, benadachat ah, ro eh, zel in belnaash ango. Akwa'eh di ho'wan benash'te'ah daho'le'iti na'asthonsitro eh, ah, je ha'tabwaisde'chnani ben, bedahanne'akwande eh, do eh, be'ta'ahhul'yan do hajjo' nichi chit. Haja nichichidon hishe betadote espalon. Hilachis ta tahalo ho wam ben na shtratahle. Aro e di kodo Dr. Burge je e di tonan estes ne azel imbel hasa aje. Aje lhattoe naalkha e aje ilchiniyaj nlini aje be azel inechle. E do ade ncha ahieh nitzen do. Ashdo itaro leh do annan chitnast. Xado yesu kudo behate seh azel nlini baholo da e kudon. Nahaha tal eh ashkona shik e do shidne eh nichichne. Akwa di azel imbel nahas an go e chleni ol ye. Tahol ye e aan tal ne do kad nichidne eh. A nchiyachet khato dabedel tal on banek khey. Aro di onahon nechadze ge Dr. Hammett je e kudo. Azel inen leh je aje John Hopkins dech. Nini aje itcha. Na atani itlinon platon naalkha e di d'koshnas e tsad. Da bedi nini. Nash nehii aje naalkha hi e adi naalkha. Akwande oyoh bechte, nanchidetol, nan chidetol khat. Nini oyoh bechte, ni tlini. Nitzen akoa aro di azel imbel nahas ano e di. Khat home test ke ilna aho wam den. Nshtool kha ho e e ya. Bechichehona nalneh e di azel i, azel ije. Imbel nahas anje ade sheen chichrohona ney tle. Ho e sheen nase ben chilna da kwilne do leh aro di azepa hazin. Ha nini e a a dechni. Rashi di Johnson &amp; Johnson na ol ye. De e do a a dechno ita akwande nichikwaje. Llanichidne eh bahatal ya e ten to to. Ta t'ehka e ben na dole. Kinahal khitdo azel inyesu besh nahas an do azetal ento. Ade e ya. E e aya at eh do acho cho on ba chunahon. Ta akwa e ochutashik e do shidne eh. Aro kudan ade ta isen ntsan eh ahieh na nchitechni do leh. Shik e do shidne eh. O akwana yuy kudje inata akis. Akwa na khitamon dole ti tamon ne kudon chilna tahuilne. Joe chashin, jo e ya kudo e ilchanne do ilishtan olzen. Jo hota e kudon hinatani. Nlini tylade shiya, shen na aro shiyash. Aro tylade na atani dan linii. Chala ita kudon nichidne eh belishtan olzen do. Nini e ochutab besh naho a. Akwa di d'koshnas e tsad da. Wal yenii. O jo shla akwada jenida. Platan eh o jo akwande jo na antinid esik e do shidne. Aro bahane do ben ahinotkin. Di behesani nlini oyu bechonol on holjish. Llanachitdo yu wajje. Aro a laadan chidet. Nini ita akwa ahieh nichidi ni do leh chala nichi e dat. Lhattoe yanso do khit bechonol ini ben nachje. Aro di nal dogi aro lapenaho ne lahota. Intol nchli gich oshtoytini. Jo e ed adi nchina kot e nash neh. E do do nichiyachatol tota. Rashi inle depensa je adi ye go nash neh. De aro e aje otatahka ashkona. Aro di azepa hazin. Ha nini ka Pfizer, aro Moderna. Aro cheyin chey dech nini. Aro an ichi nicha azetaholno shik e do shidne. Akwa tsata taholno do azel an at eh. E da dahl bej o da dahl shihiko. Do sheen do sheen ya salan. Betahuil an da sa e chashinid. E sheen deneni tlini azel asan chilbeda hazen. E da chidol. An konchal chinol shahod na ho iljol. Aro di ahos tchatat datto tegobeda khey. Jo e azepa aholno hat oni. Di na kitzat da beda khitdo tchatat datinat ishlaat da beda khey. E adi naz kha shik e do shidne. Ko e di da tsad dey zelhi biye do dey da tsad. Na dez do tsad aje ba bela anle. Akwa bahonosin nchaalchiniyaj. Latsa na kitzat datto ya gabeda khey adi azepa aten. Akwa ato bahaleh datto ato bela anle. Da jo e sheen na. Lhattoe adi haja nichichidon hishe betadote espalona. Khet chindah. Apini aho wam den naz tanlego tchago dan chilna t'chaj. Jo nichidi non kudo. Di anas go e ya kudo rashi inle. Kinahal kidei do CDC dech. Ne ana e khat nichichidon hishe dat espalin ohle. Da a koda nini. Jo nichikwaje deneni tline kudo nichinatana shohe else. Nichae abeni da da kha nitzeni ben na. Aro nchila atka tahkeso. Estan des ezan tahkri ben chitraanaj chega inosin jo nichidne. Aro di ho wam de e oyuna nishben na shtratahle do beita aholl ya. Akwa nas tsonosipet ohna yodo daba aholl ya do. Haja nichichin hishe dat espalachis ta ben na sal aro ilkha hatadoliya. E da tro besh trosozulo besh ita la aje elcen dasas. Aro di la o yugo aan tal dan shik e do shidne. Akwa di chitso bihi khey alla beso be olta di ya je nar khit. Akwa e business do ye asaho aan tal ne. Aro di olcha ol yeje aje do allan. At eh. La olcha e adi. Di abentse kesu je aje adi be. Be 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 nintindo be inchachin adi aje ye otahol a. Akwande di jo yitchalido jo. Nan tsindo jo nkidelni aje e laam. Anachalchiniyaj en dan ne. Akwa olcha do datonno aro leh kudo aje ndano beke na tahkri. Akwa e do g'ncha bahonosin aje do olchun la beda delna. Akwa di aro shahol park sey chnenle tchagze. Go e aje e aan tal ya akwande nichidne. Jo aji epa. Aro di ta atango do la aan tal ya. Shik e shidne eh di ta atango aan tal ya ashkona. Pa aholl ya. Aje dey nishi do beson dey chidido. Aje yan cha dey kahi waitress waiters datoliya. Bahonosin. Aro aje triyan al ino ne aje ben atani taholo. Chashine la aakwana asa asahon da atle. E sa oyoh yichitne dan lidro aro be bechke basa tahonol ne. Chala be do denaya chahnizen. Akwa meeting area da no aje ndahalnehon. Do ta tanoo e bechonol. En jo kido ncha chahnizen no sheen na an ne. Aro di. Inle flea markets dey chnenago. E it adi do a do aanar ne. Da akwande pa ye lchitdo band dey t'chala ita e kwa eh. Haja ba aan do linjo e adi bahuin. Aro naakwana e di oyui islatin. Chahautsoje ben chehhot gosin chala ita atene ochutat aila. Chala ita azel junno ba atahas. Kantan chilno ade yandan chidel. Kuda ade kinahal kidei la nchaani ya do. Chala ita atalten sheen nichidne no aita chadbe chan chitolzit. Akwa nas go ne nje e peta atahol ya shik e do shidne. Nichitzis nlini bahosin. Pa aholl ya triyan chohli inid. Ba aholl ya itcha hazeh da aro ndaazel tsonggo dahid. Otta be ta ahwajilia. Aro cha ai cha ihii do haja. Nichintse kesi haja go cha taholhi. Aro di itsez inle an chinal kidebi news e aro ya. Danol ine jo aje. At san se ilkeso ya ya yannadil kha. Do ade. Aro ke de ben dey stehi ashkona shik e do shidne eh ncha atatse. Rashi bechke nolhli de jo an ichi ita ati do. Nchima nichire nichichey nichinale. Nichik e dan linii epa ncha atse. Chala be do be detol na dan nitzeni ben na nchidi. Ne akwa di da ntsan go azel eh. Imbel nahas an go allan at eh. Nichidro kudon na atani ni tlini. E da tsalato aan nadol nila ade. Nichik e nlini ba atatse. Jo la ta ade cholcholno e cha atse la eldo. E pa ahieh nitzen. Aro ade nchidodizenda dey tsai. Nichik e nohlini ahieh e. Aji ini ilan atan ichi otla. Da a kui chitso dilzin. Nahasaha nohlini chatkasi nohlini aro nalcosateno ahido. Azel ben naharaj do amasan eh chey annal atda. Ashalchiniyajin dekatsodilzin itahol a. E ahieh nichidi ni do shik e do shidne. Kudo an ichi otan an ichi itaytand e ya. Konso go e kudo ba atcha nahoshne do. Nchaalchene na meishtla do leh. Aro na ahieh kudon dan hisenochzihii. Kodo shee shen na nichichana natsi. President, Mr. President?
Ah, here, Sister. Dr. Fowler. Kudo ncha taholno. All day, the Christian meeting, the city line. The neck edge, kudo yik e di ne beja asta ne. In lagi ba ahieh nitzen don na nishin. Inigi, jo di itzoladei dan linigi. Kudo ncha nda nishigi. E yego ben na nish. Ncha dey, ndeyl on. The cade. Nakhiye bela nachi. E kudo ohieh be dshni do leh. Als go kon. Division Directors nohlinigi do. Ade, bash bahas an nohlinigi. Do ni tcha naz nalay baaga, baaga da ni de. E do ni rigi la. Kon, nichinatani da zlini. Rashi e aita na anas go. Da bedi noh otta baaga ni de. E do otta kha ney chah. Jo elchilne ilnehro. E ben nachje kon. Di nash nehii d'koshnscagi. Di nash nehii yakon ni lto. Do illa kon. Yik e ni ne. Di d'koshnscagi bedatol na. Do jo di chid. Be dshni ona di. Di llel kido alla aje. E e ya aro la nichid. Ah, jo dena di d'koshnscagi beni na. Aro la do bedol na. E di in kon ba tahui ni. Aro kon do nichina, nichik e nichidne ben na nishdech. Inigi e do. Ahieh dabadohne kon tcha dadok kha hoye. Tsular da b'zigo. Tsular da kuchya i raho leze. Na liha bhaoganda onle otchajdo raho. Ahieh dabadohne. Aro azel in do. Aro olcha dan linigi atso. Ke dan linigi. Tashi do. Kudo nchaalchun beje yadalteh. Ashno da ista. E do ahieh mado je chey masan annalu nohlinigi. Jo hota e da ni tchinani ltsko. Kon, nchaalchun yitso ke inale ke. Ye dabetziil do leh. Nichin ye olildon yenantin. E hota beje. Asta ne dey ne ye dabetziil do leh. Di bechke di khaod esik e do shidne eh di nash nehigi. L'ka ney chah. So o, o kudo e ya. Ahieh do. Ata atahol ya. Shik e do shidne. You know, we just want to end by saying to take care of yourself and to, you know, when you're out there traveling or in public, you can always tell a frontline worker, either a nurse, healthcare worker, police officer. Just thank them. Give them a fist bump or an elbow, you know. And just say thank you for the work that they have been doing throughout this pandemic. It's a unified effort. And let us also say thank you to our children or grandchildren for listening to these public health experts, our leaders, our first responders, because we will get through this pandemic. I know we will. We're the great Navajo Nation. We have the strong leaders from the past that have gotten us to where we're at today, you know. And for us as new leaders, we just continue to do a lot of the things that they wanted for the Navajo people. And so God bless you. Have a good evening. And on Thursday, we will have our town hall meeting at 6:00 again. And tomorrow, if you're available at 9:00 a.m. or 1:00 p.m., come in and join us for the agency meetings regarding the CARES Act, the American Recovery. American Rescue Plan Act funds. What we're envisioning and planning for Navajo people on your behalf, because you pretty much gave us the marching orders during the election. And this is what we need. And this is what the future of our Navajo people should have to better the quality of life for our Navajo citizens. So God bless you. Have a good evening. Thank you so much. Konso shin yidje. Hanan yidje kudei liyado leh. Thank you so much.